The one print, uh, is another one that he just sent you an email for. But I think you gotta sign too, because if you don't... Yeah, I think so, 'cause he says we have limited time here before we, uh, lose our opportunity.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Yep. So just give me a stamp. Matt, you responded to it. You said, "Matt, I have read and do not find any problems with this draft." Yeah, it said in the, it said in the email. Yeah, I saw it. I mean, look. So, just give me your stamp and I'll start stamping everything here.
Are we gonna have fun this week?
Trying to find it. Well, that was a drag, isn't it? It's, I thought it was pretty good.
We've sold a bunch of board to update workshop to order, from the first of 2019. While that's happening, Terry bringing up my first kind of discussion.
In ten days, it's available, or by October 27th. Alright, so you should probably do that before you go. I'm okay here. Why I brought it up? Well, then you just need to tell him to call me. Well, it's gonna cost, it's gonna cost, uh, as we go through, as we go along. If everything increases, we're all good. Alright, sending this chain for approval at October 17th. Are you gonna be back? Yeah. Says approval at October 17th. Any delays will hinder reimbursement until, until 2020. So we need to make sure it's done.
Too much harder to be a stretch for me.
Okay. Alright. Then we're good with that. We just, do you wanna discuss it all with everybody? It doesn't look like everybody received the email, but... Yeah.
They're coming along really well, and they're working on the last Friday.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, they're, well, that's why they had to do that.
Yeah, well, there was something near the...
They had to approve, yes, but they weren't working on that. But that's fine.
Okay. So nothing we need to really do with that until the October 17th board meeting then?
Right.
Did we order anything? Are we ready?
Oh, I already called them to order.
Alright. We're in order.
We're in order. The rest of the, we're good, right? Because it's due on the 25th.
Twenty-seventh.
Well, you're doing a great job.
Did you wear the stuff for the...
Pardon?
Did you start the meeting?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't hear that.
Yeah, you were having a private conversation.
Sorry.
You guys are all talking without a microphone, I guess you can't hear.
Well, I didn't think we needed it, if we don't have, uh...
You don't.
Right. I don't like to talk loud, sorry.
Alright, restore to your plan. So we're done yet. It looked good to me, and the building is up.
Oh, yeah, he's... Yep, that was the last one.
Yep. Which will probably be one of the toughest, actually.
Yeah.
That's why you saved it till last.
Putting offices upstairs and...
Yeah.
Alright, so then we'll just be prepared to vote on the 27th.
Oh, sorry, everybody.
Why is everyone watching their own movies here? We got a meeting going, huh?
Who are you watching?
Captain Zabachi.
Heather's watching something.
Why was it, who was lighting me?
Jude was lighting her.
No, I didn't, I didn't...
What were you watching? She had a smartphone.
I didn't do that, I stopped believing my ears, I was...
Jude, you got a flip phone?
I can't watch videos I watch.
She said you did, I'm just asking.
I'm ready to do that way, I'm jumping.
My camera. Did this escalate or what?
I got it.
Guess what?
Alright, we're moving on to Halloween.
Yeah.
Darren decided we don't have two minutes anymore for the workshop, so you're all good.
I'm done for the candy again. How many of you are there? Yeah, well, you showed off me here to a picture of Halloween.
Yes.
What are you dressing up as?
Trick or treat, trick hill. What time does it start?
No one knew she was coming.
I don't know, I'm thinking about it.
What?
Trying to dress up as... What time does it start? Are you gonna do the wizard here?
He was having a...
The eleventh, or Thursday? Spitting. Yeah. Is your friend coming in? I think so.
Well, that's, I don't know.
Is there a parade or something? I don't know the details.
No. No, there's not a parade.
Uh, yeah, and, um...
I asked Matt Turp.
Well, Peter's got the whole, he's got the base.
And then I think Ed will start you on one o'clock.
Am I getting trouble, I feel?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, maybe...
Three, one, two, three.
Exactly, I think it was.
We had the thing here before.
Mr. Elder is in the other room in another meeting. If you want his movement to Halloween, to the end of the meeting, and maybe he'll be able to...
That'd be a good idea, he's got all the detail.
But he's in a...
Well, he's supposed to be back here anyways for tree markers.
Yep, yes.
Okay.
Alright, we'll move it. So what else? Heather obviously put that on there for more than me just said, let's pass some candy, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Judy, you're gonna be here, right?
Yeah, she'll herself as a worship.
I will be here too.
Always.
She always does.
Do you wanna do a table for us? Do you wanna do a table for us?
I'm sure he's got it.
Yeah, I'll work in the state.
The 10th? What's the date?
I'll eat a donut.
Can you be here at 10:30?
You just said the 10th.
Oh, you could, you could man the donut table.
I'll do the donut date.
Oh, I don't know.
I believe all the donuts.
It's the 26th.
I want a new section, so I don't know if on Friday night or Saturday.
What, the badminton? Badminton. Twenty-sixth.
You coaching badminton?
You're the game this weekend, you're game of the year.
I asked Kyle to be, to do the pictures for us this year, 'cause he did such a nice job, but he might have a real job. So we're waiting on that. And then Marcia will be here, and Marcia's daughter might come. And then for judges, I asked Matt Turp, but I haven't heard back yet. And I asked Don, and he's gonna do it, and then I just, I need one more. Oh, we were gonna ask Judge Corb.
Oh, David, yeah.
And he actually wore his judge.
I think it would be a good fiscal decision to have Jake judge, so that he's not eating the candy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, what if I wanna judge the candy?
You can have judge the donuts with me.
Right.
What are you gonna be this year? Carl, you're gonna be Mr. Gruff again? The cr- the crummy dog guy?
I thought he was...
Louis Linguini.
Louis Linguini, okay.
No, that's what I was like there.
Inspector Gadget. Do you get me clear on this?
Yeah. Last year I was Louis Linguini. Remember, you hated that outfit, I went and spit in all of it. Where he sat there with that thing on his head?
The green thing? Okay, um, that was all.
You probably think, look at this guy.
Peter's wife has offered to walk around and get the prizes for us. So, and we've already started, um, ordering like the stuff we do to, to add to the bags. So we're in good shape.
Love to be places. I can't.
I can.
Is it, like, does it should cancel listed business stuff? Al can though.
Al?
Yeah.
Can you give us some staples or something?
He hasn't worked a staple since...
Office supplies? No.
Three years.
Office supplies. I haven't been in that one.
You should know what you're doing, there's...
He works at One Style.
Alright, that's it on Halloween. That was easy, it was a jitsa-hum challenge.
I just wanted to know who was gonna be here.
I'll try to take it, but I don't need it there.
Okay, who you ask, who work in? And Jake will be our resident candy tester.
Yeah, I'm usually around, but I'm back and forth, I'm one of the explorers.
Yeah, he goes from the front basket to the back.
But for the explorer's basket too, and the open house, we always started the open house at the playerhouse that day. And there's fried cakes there too.
I still can't hear my mic.
Probably. She'll be here, right? I mean, definitely.
Then, um, we moved iCircle for that, um, Friday morning, so we're able to set up, and the guys can set up.
Good, that's what I just wanted to know.
Yep. And then, um, we're not gonna have the carpets cleaned until after.
Next.
That's a really good idea.
Makes me more thoughtful this year on that.
Yes.
So you had the donuts and all that stuff will be here.
Yep, we're gonna ask Duncan again to donate, and then shoes to donate, um, this year.
Gives me such a chance to dye my mustache again.
There you go.
So I'll turn it white after.
Alright, discussion of printer and contract.
Nope. I wish it then.
One printer?
Yes. So we got, our leasing agreement is up in late November. So we just wanna let you know that we got, um, a couple quotes from, um, right now we have Toshiba, and then we got a quote from Xerox. And, um, they're pretty comparable. They actually are gonna be a little bit cheaper than what we were paying. Um, we're just in the process of figuring out, um, which one to go with. They're pretty, they're basically the same.
By American.
Yeah, I was even talking to the guy today at Overdow Shop, two doors down from you guys, about the Toshiba.
What'd you say?
A new contract.
Yes.
Cause I was listening, we're due.
Oh, are you? Okay. Yeah. Um, we were gonna go with, um, Xerox. They offered to pay to send the Toshiba back, 'cause that's a significant cost if you switch with someone else, so they offered to pay for that. And obviously Toshiba will ship it back, so.
Good.
You guys had any insight?
It's good.
Some of Xerox is slightly less.
Yeah, just a little, but there, it's like a couple dollars. Yeah. And then, so we made the...
What is the monthly payment then?
The total monthly payment for, um, Xerox is $245.55, which includes 4,000 black and white pages per month, and, um, 69 cents a sheet, and then 1,000 color pages per month. And, um, I believe we actually get a little bit more with, um, with Xerox than with Toshiba for the color. Yeah.
How about a maintenance contract?
Um, that's included. We just said, so, um, the next meeting I'll ask for a motion or a resolution to, um, what is setting the leasing.
4,000 sheets?
Yeah. They... I'm trying to cut down on that.
Two hundred a day?
It's, it was such...
Forty-nine cents a sheet?
Or she, I mean, that's what, yeah, or 69 cents, and that's what it equates to 4,000 black and white, and then 1,000 color pages.
That's two hundred a day.
For the most part, we don't print a ton, the major, in my print packets.
Oh, that's, yeah.
That's black and whites.
Yeah, because normally we got an awful lot of paper too, that we now we're not, we scan a lot.
Right. But then, it is, I'm sorry, it's 69 cents a page for over 4,000 black and white. And then 50 cents over, anything over 1,000 color pages for Xerox.
For running over, I thought there's a print limit.
Yes. And then, um, with the, with Toshiba, it's, um, that includes 4,000 black and white and 1,000 color, so same thing. And they match the price, 69 cents and 50 cents for anything over. So it's pretty much the same. So right now we're just deciding between what's gonna fit us better. Xerox? Sure.
Yeah. She goes, "Oh, you sure the Xerxes made America?" I was, "Pretty sure." Jake's like, "Yeah, they're right there, Webster."
I'm, I'm inclined to go with Xerox, but we do have a, we have a relationship with Toshiba, and we had great, they come right out.
What's the difference? Couple bucks a month?
One's $2.50, three thirty-four a month, and one's $2.45.55.
A few bucks. By American.
The Toshiba was the one that was slightly, slightly more.
I'm sure for $2.45, they'd be a business.
I know, but their service is great too.
Yeah, and it's, they come right out, same thing.
I think that's a decision I can make, but you...
Thanks.
Yeah, but thanks for the information.
Yeah, thanks for the information.
Alright, remember, we're waiting on...
You good American for some day?
Pre-American update.
Anything else? I got some filler.
Yeah, oh yeah, you can say some stuff.
Um, don't know, um, I just wanna confirm, the neighborhood in the south of the playerhouse, you talked about that, I did get some further information, we got to work planning. Um, talking to Will today, he was in, um, so we handed to the draftees, and I gotta kinda send it to Don. But before he signs up and pays the fees and everything to go with zoning, I guess, it's like confidence in the, is everybody already, the concept of it, um, of if he gets approval from zoning, or planning, rather, not zoning, but planning board, to enter into an easement, so him to ingress egress over that portion, and then he's gonna also, it's basically the whole common boundary line where he had, he wants to kinda clean out, and put some urban remedies and things like that, he's gonna be able to scrub these stuff, so. Figuring so, it's a pretty positive change he wants to make, but, um, just wanna make sure, I hate to see him go to planning, you know, go through that and the fees, and the PSF plans, whatever those costs that are associated with that, just come back and say, "No, we don't face the budget." That wouldn't be very fair, so. I know we can't, without having something to hold on, but, does anybody have any questions about it, or any opposition?
Nope, I have no concerns.
Are you doing any, I thought I was agreeing up with you.
Okay. Alright. And I don't recall if I mentioned, there was one thing at the end of last meeting that I was hitting myself in the head, and I was trying to remember, and I couldn't. But the, did we discuss the parking lot at all? The village parking lots are somebody's dwellers. We had one vehicle that's been parked here, um, quite a bit, a larger food truck, let's say.
Oh, they're tacos and...
Yeah, a lot of people have seen.
It says ales, aren't they?
And, um, and I think that that's kind of expanded, people think that there's more, more parking, it's okay, now we have an RV that's, that's parked there as well. And then we had a boat, we had somebody there, the boat was dropped off on a trailer, and then, um, we got an email in, I think, the Friday, like maybe the day after it was dropped off or something, or that day, saying, "Hey, is it alright if we leave it there until April?" No, 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 it's not alright, that's not the purpose. Our code's a little, it could be more clear. So I talked to Joe Rehear, the police chief, about it. You know, our code says you can't park out, you have to park within the designated spaces. You know, it doesn't necessarily say you can't extend past a designated space. You know, um, the way vehicles described in our code, it follows a description of a vehicle and traffic lot, which a vehicle is anything that can be driven or drawn upon a highway, so over the trailer. And it's required that anything that's in our lot has to be, you know, suitable for use on a highway. By that grounds, a trailer does meet it, so we've got something that we're, we're working. I think at the next meeting, if we could, we'll, before that, we'll send stuff around, but then look to have a public hearing, and set the thing in motion to clarify.
How long is it? That was 72 hours.
Um, that's what the, the large, the village lots have, have always been, 72 hours for...
So you leave your car in a parking lot for 30 days, that's odd.
Yeah, well, I mean, if, especially if someone lives near there, maybe they go away for the weekend. You know, if they live nearby, a lot of times, especially in this area, you know, you think, well, you know, people that live above the stores and things, there's not parking at their, at their house or at their apartment, you know, so they do use municipal lots for, for parking. And so, this is...
Unless you're caught.
Yeah, the mode change that we're, that we're looking at is basically defining that you have to park wholly within a space. You can't, you can't extend past the spaces, you gotta be within a spot. You'd have to, you know, a vehicle with a trailer attached to it can park, you know, in an inline spot, but it can, it can't park between 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM at any time, can't park 72 hours like that. So between 2:00 and 6:00, and that's, I think, a little easier to enforce, because someone goes out there and sees a trailer at 3:00 in the morning, a car with a trailer attached, they know it's a violation, it's not...
Right.
You don't have to guess about how long it's been there, and if somebody moved it or didn't move it. And then, uh, the third component of it is vehicle, or trailers without a vehicle attached to them aren't allowed at any time. So you can't just bring a trailer up and park it and leave, so. And I think it's, you know, it's, it's never been an issue before, but I think one, you know, one person or one, one thing they saw, and then everybody's, you know, it's, kinda keeps growing, and the amount of, it's kinda clarify what our code was, and to make sure that, you know, it's a public parking spot, it's not a storage facility, so it's a...
And I'm gonna go ahead and be done here?
No, it's on all the villi, any village lot.
Yeah, I mean, we just like the museum lots there, because that, and I just give you a call when the guys there too long.
Yeah.
You get to sit there and park.
So tacos.
Unlicensed.
But we'll, we'll, um...
Unlicensed, diagnosed.
Yeah, so we're gonna, we'll have that going up, and it's, it's not a response to anyone. Not a response to any one particular vehicle or spot, but it's just that this is growing. We had a code that kind of addresses it, but it could, could be clarified, so that everybody's expectations are, are the same, you know, and...
I would take a look at that. Starting out the code.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about, which trades up the code, so that was the code change that we're gonna, kinda send out for comment, and then try to, I guess, I try to, we have the new public hearing, and then the legal notice on the public hearing, and then, um, it has to go before it could change, so it'll be local law 3 of 2019, I guess. Yeah.
Would there be any possibility to allow that? I'm bringing Charlie, it's him and you, to the conversation with the parking lot that's over there. That's being used right now as a sitting area for vehicles.
I can see, you know, because our code stipulates as any, any, um, and that'd be a good Don question, 'cause is any parking lot, I don't have it memorized, but any parking lot owned or maintained, owned, leased or maintained by the village of Western. We really don't maintain those lots, we maintain the drive lanes, we own the drive lanes through the lots on that particular park, but we have an ingress egress easement over it. And we don't plow it, we don't maintain it, uh, we will remove snow when it's stockpiled, that's part of the exchange for the open parking over on that side was, once the snow is pushed into a stockpile location, we'll remove it at the same timing or schedule that we remove other snow, um, you know, when we are hauling snow out of the parking lots, so. That'd be a good Don question, I guess, if we do, is that considered maintenance activity? If you're, you know, if you're not clearing the snow from it, really, if we're just clearing snow that used to be on it, I don't, I don't know if that's, if that would apply, or, or is there another thing that we can put on any, you know, any...
Oh, where do they put this snow? In a big pile?
Yeah, yep.
Yeah.
On the property, so we do, and that someone may paint it.
They're separate, they're separate properties, though, there's actually multiple parcels, and when the road went through, it actually cut it all up into like four, four different parcels. So that excess lane through there, um, now creates different parcels, and there's an easement, cross easement over the whole property, and ingress egress, and parking, and pedestrian traffic and everything. Over, basically everything from Gertrude Park over, um, to the line, you know, behind, um, I always point about the big, the old herbinos, the old herbinos, I guess it is now, um, in that area. So, again, that'd be a good question for Don to see what, you know, maybe what constitutes a maintenance activity, and if that would apply, if we can... I think at this time, the, the thought was that we couldn't regulate parking in those lots, because they don't fit the definition of where we, you know, what we could regulate, because they're not ours.
I can't remember till I remember.
Yeah, so, yeah, see, maybe there's something that could go into that code change that might be owned leased, or, or any public parking that's, you know, on village owned leased, or through an easement or other agreement, you know, that the village, but we don't maintain it still, so.
Why, are their cars just parked there, left there?
Yeah, sure.
By who?
I feel like they're more in that other lot too, not on the car.
By who's, but, do we have an idea of who's owned?
There were some, but they've stopped after our, after our lot was taken off the campground site.
Oh, that was, yeah, that was a different situation.
That was different, yeah.
Uh, still, potentially, we had three and a half started without even trying, so.
Well, because we had food, and the food covered it. Most buses don't have that.
West of the, uh, Sprague School parking lot, used to be the tennis courts.
Yes.
And now it's pretty unsightly, who knows what it is. It looks like it's a parking lot for downstairs and stuff. It, you know, is there, is there anything we can do about making that a little bit less unsightly?
Yeah, I think the, the school's doing a huge capital project over there, and that's part of it, I actually gonna, um, I think they're gonna have a new entrance to buildings and grounds on that side, and separate, either separate, um, I think it's gonna be all separate from the school buses and that entrance, so there, where those parking lots are, you know, it's just, they're in construction right now. And also they're separate lot, where they group everything over there, but I think ultimately the plan is to make that an entrance in and out into the buildings and ground area, and kinda reconfigure that.
Yeah, okay.
Um, one other thing too, NOCO, in case anybody asks you...
Yeah, what's up with that? Who bought NOCO?
I'm not sure who bought it, but it helped me. NOCO, from my understanding, uh, yesterday we talked, because there was people over there pumping gas, and there was nobody in the store, or we didn't think anybody in the store, and we have to have an attendant. Uh, I mean, it's the credit card work, but it's, it's, uh, you know, fire codes, that you gotta have an attendant, when there's somebody, when there's, when they're pumping gas, you know, just looking at it quick, but. Uh, so we went over there, did, there was some guy in the back, he was doing some work there, and he indicated NOCO sold the business, but not the property. NOCO was retaining the property, sold the business. They were gonna be in there yesterday doing some inventory stuff, and, you know, figuring out everything, and obviously there are certain licenses, like the liquor license and the lottery, it's up in the pyramid, and there's lottery stuff that has to be able to bag under the new names, there's gonna be some stuff, and they do, uh, but I was expecting that they were gonna be open again today. Yeah, they, that's one question I have a note on here, um, they should, when I saw the garbage, you know, we, obviously we had a shared agreement with NOCO for any license, I just have to look at the language, or if Don will look at it, I think it's, usually there's successors or assigns or things like that, if they buy into that. And we did it, I don't know how, how they're listed on the front of that easement or that, that agreement, you know, say the owner, um, you know, right, we'll do everything we've got to do. everything we've got to do, then.
Is it going to take a lot of downtime, this wasn't then being implemented?
Yeah, from my understanding, this, the first one, this one also bought the one in Massenden, and they were over there earlier in the morning yesterday, and then they were coming over here, eleven, twelve o'clock, come to this store, um, there's another one, a big one over in Massenden, it's not like McDonald's in it, NOCO on a laundry mat, we don't have room for that one. But that one, um, and it's the same owner, and this is gonna be like this eighth or ninth store that he has, so. I understand, I think it's Speedies, I believe, is what it's called.
So is it gonna change this piece?
No, it's, yeah, so they're gonna, I get, apparently they're gonna have NOCO gas, and, which I thought you said, and you asked you to the front of all the pumps, and you're done, so, this would be easy, which I don't...
So they will be doing signage changes?
Yeah, they're gonna be doing some signage changes, just updates to reflect the new, the new owners or new businesses. And, uh, I know Will's speaking, and I know what they're talking about, things that they're gonna have to do, so. That's it. And I don't know if there's, I think there's still information needed for the unmade leave of absence after you're discussing your list?
Yeah, I'll have an update the next meeting for that. I do have two other things, though, that I think. Um, we, I updated the fee schedule, these sound numbers that you added for the, for the, um, small cell, and then, um, everyone except two board members have completed the sexual harassment training, not us, planning zoning, and Lynn Barton, I scheduled a sexual harassment training with her for eleven AM on Monday, and she did not show up.
Um, yeah.
Sheriff Troy, the board members?
Yeah. Tier flowers and, I don't have the other one. Just to not check even the village name. She didn't show up. Yeah, because we could be, we could be fined, so it's not completely...
How much you did it?
True. Yeah, if you do that, I guess, they work on it, I guess, I do it for the board members, too.
I wish you'd be notified if they have anything, uh, who's coming up next week, that this is zoning?
Um, next week, well, this week we have, you know, the planning zoning, and Joe's gonna mention it again, and then I'll do it again at six o'clock before our next board meeting. But, I mean, I should have to...
No, that's ridiculous, I, I will give...
And I scheduled a specific time during the day for light mention.
Somebody answered a question for me as far as, uh, there, there's a seat open on the zoning board. Correct?
We have two seats.
Zoning, it's a seat that I left actually.
Would my wife be able to, uh, sit on that seat?
I think, as, as really just serious, I think the anti-nepotism policy says that any members, immediate family of the boards, like my kids, you don't have to read it, but I recall that being in there.
Yeah. Well, it's worth a question.
I don't know, we're still waiting for Peter, you know, I know the board discussed with the sewer advisory committee, having the, um, you know, any handouts or any information, I emailed everything over. Um, I did have the opportunity to come up with some additional, there's some questions and things that the lead at the first meeting, um, I don't know if you want me to send the PowerPoint out to everybody that's kind of addressing those things, or if you wanna just view it now, either it's, it's, it's fresh off the press, so it hasn't been fully invented, or, uh, hopefully all the animations and everything works, so I don't know if you wanna see it now, or if you wanna just email it.
I saw it on there, I bet.
Oh, it's, no, it's a new, this is an update, this is, this is responses to questions.
This is a different, we got all the questions and stuff.
You want, I can flip down it now here. Try to turn this way, so.
I think it needs some bifurcators.
Yeah, we need a bigger tree.
Bifurcators?
Yeah.
Maybe a tow sheep, I guess. Some of the questions, you know, the questions that they had, um, we discussed energy efficiency, so, you know, looking for the data on that, the impacts of Xerox flows, question, I think there's a similar question the board had, how can the impact be the same if one option includes more users? Uh, growth potential that was used, we referenced that, um, age of the systems, and, uh, there was industrial permit limits and ability to treat, um, so some of the things, um, I have to find where my pointer is, there it is. Uh, the energy efficiency, basically, this is from the town, this is information we get from the town all back to ninety-eight, the flows, so that's one aspect of the data that we get. Two thousand and floor, or two thousand and fourteen flows were included in the PER, they're the engineering report, um, so that's, we took those flows, it's, oh, that was a neat animation, so I wanna, all right, I wanna show that one, that took me a little bit to... I haven't mastered PowerPoint too much, so it was very interesting to work. Uh, at that time, two thousand and fourteen town flows are three point eight six million gallons a day, and the village flow average, one point three four million gallons a day. Um, so then, this information here, the town electric information, you can find it in table five-ten, page eighty-four of the town PER, or the BNL's, uh, engineering report. The village electric information is basically very often the monthly invoices for the sewer-related stuff, so if you add up all the kilowatt hours and, and you get total kilowatts, average flow times three sixty-five gives you total, total yearly flow, and you can do a calculation. There was a question on energy efficiency, and you'll see down here that, you know, given that same information, the village treated, there are about eight hundred and thirty-three gallons for, per kilowatt hour, and the town's operation, you know, is, is three hundred and forty gallons per kilowatt hour. So, um, and their question, next one was the impact of Xerox with, um, the lack of Xerox flows, I guess. Uh, the individual project, you know, look at all the components of the individual project and the regional project, you have, I don't think I can, my pointer's not up there, but, um, that's all the components of it, O and M, treatment and collection system for the village, current system, um, is that big, large blue, it's a big portion of, eight hundred and eighty grand, and then we have current debt service, the new town debt service, our portion of the town project, the village phase one project, and then short-lived assets, we'd have a hundred percent. Um, certain, in, in a regional plan, I guess I'll just go with our regional plan, we pay a portion of an O and M in treatment, right now our flows are about twenty-seven, twenty-eight percent, um, so if you do the calculations, we're, that's, it's about two point six million dollar O and M in treatment cost, and that, this was from BNL's, um, the PER, when you look at their O and M, or that, their, their chart, that big spreadsheet they sent out, look at the O and M costs, and we've, just use, trying to keep it consistent, that two point six percent inflation every year, um, to figure out, estimate the cost, so that's about twenty-seven, twenty-eight percent of that. Short-lived assets, that's a proportion of the short-lived assets, and for combined system, it's eighty-four thousand is the short-lived assets, with our individual project, they're eighty-four, so you see it's less on the short-lived assets. Village collection system is something that's, you know, obviously if it's regional treatment, and you're talking about different collection systems, that's a charge in there. Village current debt service is consistent across the board, they just, I could not figure out how to keep the, the colors the same from one to the other, because there's different things. Then village debt service, new debt service, that would be our portion of the overall project, if it was a regional project. Um, right now that equates, you know, about one ninety-nine per ECU when you're looking at the year-one cost, you know, if we're doing just phase one, um, and then, which is very consistent, they had a two forty-four figure, so it's, it's another couple bucks. Say we move Xerox, the total cost of the village, and the total cost of the village in these two scenarios, it's about five thousand dollars, um, different. Um, when you look at the O and M and treatment costs, um, because we'd have a smaller piece of the pie, we'd have a smaller piece of the treatment, remember back in this one, it was seven hundred and thirty grand, here we're only paying four hundred and sixteen grand, but our village collection costs would be the exact same, our short-lived assets would be less, because we'd again have a smaller piece of the pie, but our current debt service would remain the same, and our new debt service would remain the same, so that chunk, you know, I mean, going back and forth, that O and M and treatment, um, and the village collection, you know, the village collection's saying that O and M and treatments, we're paying a smaller, a smaller bit of it, you see the total cost went down, but it's still, when you get done and divided by the new EDUs, if you take Xerox completely out of it, it's essentially the same, four hundred and thirty, which'd be bad either way you look at it. Um, but it's not, I guess that was the point I was trying to make before, is it, it's, it's tough, you know, common sense would tell you if there's more people, you're spreading the cost out over, that it's gonna be cheaper, and, but the numbers don't, don't bear that out when you look at the way the numbers come together. In the growth projections, the special-time growth, get, I don't know why it's doing that, but I think my finger's going crazy here, um, basically, uh, from the BNL, the engineering report, uh, the revised one from May nineteenth, there's section three point two talks about the projected growth and what they use for it, um, the town and the town of Penfield, they've used a point seven five annual growth rate, this actually, in the report, it says a one point five percent annual growth rate, um, and it gives you a four point four percent over a twenty-year period. I know it, when you, when you compound it, maybe that's how you're getting to that four point four percent, but to be, um, I guess more conservative, I usually like a point two one percent from the village, um, that's gonna show a little, little more growth, um, because that's, if you're simple math, just divide out the four point four, that's where you're coming out, so, um, and that, that goes, this was pertinent, because it goes back to the way that the user costs in the summary is set up right now, they've got, you know, say it's a thirty-seven million dollar project, and they've got the village portion of it at nine percent, it's based on what our current EDUs are, and our current allocation of EDUs. If we are projected to grow basically one quarter of what the town and Penfield are growing, but we lock into that right now at our current rate, but then over the next twenty years, we're growing a quarter of what they're growing, our, it's a great situation, at least we're looking at regional treatment, to make more sense to look at it from an annual basis rather than a long-term, hey, we're locking in right now, here's what our rates are, because ultimately, as those growth trends continue, we'd end up being below twenty percent of the overall flow, but we'd still be paying, our residents or our customers would be paying for twenty-five, twenty-seven percent of the future capacity that we've never enjoyed, we don't have a lot of room to grow in, you know, in the village, so this consideration of the regional alternative, make sure that it's structured in a way that makes sense, you know, that we're paying for the capacity that we would use or that need. Um, this question on the age of the systems, uh, that's hard to tell, because frankly, it's not a static system, it's not a sta-, it's very dynamic, and they grew organically ever since they went in. You know, the original village, I, I was trying to look for information, that's why I kind of hurried this up a little bit and finished it so I can get something, you guys, but the original village system, my understanding was down near Dean Spring, right over here, there was a, something that went in, basically where Duncan Donas is, in that area, in those apartments, then it moved down, um, I think where the creek there used to go through, before the expressway and everything, moved down in the thirties, down off of, you know, two fifty and Wall Road area. Um, I couldn't find, I looked at the town comprehensive plan, the town website, um, for information about the age of their sewer system, when they started doing the sewer system, um, it did, the comprehensive plan did talk about a major upgrade in the seventies and other upgrade in the nineties, um, and our system, similar, when there, the Clean Water Act came out in the late seventies, early seventies, there's really the Clean Water Act, but that point in time, those type of, of pushes, there's a lot of money available for municipalities, uh, because of the Clean Water Act, because of those pushes that were federal and state funds that were available to make improvements to the system, so the system isn't a, hey, it went in, you know, this year's not like a car that's, here's a nineteen forty-five Buick, it, it's grown, it, you know, one piece is from thirty-eight, one's from twenty nineteen, and it's still continuing to grow, and both systems are similar in that. You know, we do, this is some part of the town comprehensive plan here near Squam, where we had to do some discussion on the, on our sewer system itself, we're looking at capacities, I think this was an exercise we had to do for insurance at one point. Um, town system's about two hundred miles of main, here's, I can tell, when this was done, there was about twenty-two pump stations, our system's at about twenty-one miles of main, um, and three pump stations, so it's roughly one-tenth, you know, of this, this system was there. Um, I do know we have about four hundred and seventy-seven manholes in our system, and I don't know how many the town has, I can only imagine there's a lot. And then there was a question on the industrial permit limits and the ability to treat, um, that was from the industrial users, you know, currently the flow that they get is primarily almost normal sewage, you know, bathroom waste, um, that goes, it's about four and a half, five and a half million gallons a month that goes to the town plant, ours gets about twenty-two million gallons a month, so there's a majority of the industrial waste goes to, to the village, um, in line with the ability to treat. Obviously, the town system holds a speeding permit, it allocates the limits, uh, activate such plants all over the place, treat industrial waste, so it's not a, not like, oh, it can't be done, it's not a, a common concept, um, there's a question on discharge request, so, in the interest of fact, here they treat ten percent of the industrial flow, but we need additional input from the town, you know, it's probably specific questions. Uh, the village system, um, we're technically a user of the speedies permit, um, this is right from the town comprehensive plan, too, in addition, affluent from the village westerns wastewater treatment plant, our treatment works, is pipe to the town for further treatment, which due to the village's treatment level, usually involves only fluorination, so that was great, you know, so it's a description of what happens down with the town plant, and we currently treat eighty-five, plus or minus percent of the industrial flow there, so, um, that's, I guess that's it. So, I have to work on animations, I need to move better, but that's, that's the information that we heard, or I...
That was Jason, you can say.
I tried to shorten it down from...
Not sure.
Yeah.
You can answer.
He answered?
Oh, I didn't.
His whole issue is, it sounds like town for bed. I wouldn't have that, no, they wouldn't have those numbers.
I, I mean, I got the numbers from their engineer and from their comprehensive plan for anyone's in town, so they could certainly drive the same numbers, I'm sure. Um, but I did also talk to the town today, I went down to visit with our, he wasn't there at the time, he called me back, and he politely declined participation in the, in the advisory committee, but hoping any questions, we got anything, and so he said, you know, he said, the system, you know, the committee could develop questions and just, you know, give them to him, and he can get them answered, he would turn them around pretty quick, he said, so, um, we thought that he'd rather decline, so.
Thank you, Jake. I, I, I was, I really wasn't, we were conducting an historic preservation commission public hearing on the Struck Memorial, so we have a plan, we're gonna submit, we're gonna bother Jake a lot about the plantings and how that, how that's gonna work out, but we, uh, I think we have a general consensus on what we want to see, and thank you for your input on that, and everybody in the public, if you're watching this video, if we would like to see if anybody has any additional comments on the tree selection types, uh, we're certainly willing to, uh...
I was gonna suggest, is, I could try to facilitate a meeting, um, between, you know, if, if you, you know, you guys wanted to go out there and meet with him, or activate them with him as well, um, there's, uh, I mean, let's just say he didn't champion the, uh, the actress, or the, the effort, uh, there's certain challenges that he could probably share with us that, that he has, and maybe a plan or a proposal could anticipate those challenges, I don't wanna give it away if people were saying, yeah, I don't wanna say the guy's name in case he was speaking out of school here, but, you know, if there's certain challenges that, that, you know, his experience, and they've been doing it for years and years, um, might be very beneficial.
Okay, great, we have a more consensus tonight, that's perfect.
Yeah, that's.
So, yes, so the quick answer to your question, if you could facilitate, that'd be wonderful, and, um, maybe, like I said, either Missy or myself, or the two of us, or who, or whatever, could run out and take a look at that, if you're all right with that, and be happy to, to look at that, see what the challenges are, so.
Yeah, I made, I made the plaques, that was what I did at Parks.
Right, I just couldn't find the program anywhere available on the internet, I, I was looking everywhere, and I could not find it, so.
They have to look at the, 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 the.
There are all sorts of, but they're actually, they're not plaques, they're tags, right?
Yeah, they're like, they're just little, like, it's like thick, plexi, plastic, and they, it's a great emboss in it.
Yeah, I wasn't really anticipating that that would probably be the way we would go, but we could. The idea here would be to kind of, kind of sort of copy what's already there, which is a pedestal they plaque on it, so it's simple.
Oh, it's expensive, though.
Except, well, they're fairly simple construction, and depending upon what you get, they're not that poorly, they may be more expensive than a plastic peg, for sure, but, but remember, I wanna just point out again, expense here is, is the expense of installation, because, and even that's inexpensive, we could offset by virtue of how much we charge for the fee. The idea, this is supposed to be a fee-neutral project, so it's a, so what you do is you set your fee on your fee schedule equal to the cost of the installation, the labor, if it's a calculator, that'll work, and then, um, and then also the, uh, and then also any, any offset you want to do to the trees themselves. So, so throwing it out there, if you say, say your fee was seventy dollars, or eighty dollars, or a hundred dollars, something like that, so, so the fee, it's not supposed to be a situation where we're worried too much about expense in that regard, because the fee schedule makes up for the expense. Does that make sense? Kind of like putting the bricks in at the park.
I'm just concerned that maybe someone wouldn't wanna spend that much.
Hmm?
I'm just concerned that maybe someone wouldn't wanna spend that much.
I was due, so when I did my research on other communities, they do, so, they do.
They do.
They do. People want to commemorate things, and they like to commemorate things, and I understand there's challenges, but getting those together would be good, but, um, but if it's, if at all possible, to do it, it does give us another element out there on the sidewalks, and it does help us meet our criteria to be a walkable community, and people have something to walk and see while they're, while they're doing that, so. So, you wanna get back to me on that?
Absolutely, yeah, no, I'll try to send, uh, the gentleman, the gentleman, they emailed us.
I'm sorry, what?
Tom, that's a great idea.
Okay, I will. So, we are hoping, we are hoping that maybe, um, you and Jake can come to our next Parks meeting, uh, I'll make sure I send you out a email, because we are, we're, we're actually working pretty much go-hole on projects right now, she's a great asset to have there, because it's not just me, and, um, and so we're, uh, we're looking at, we just did a park, she just did a park walk through, I'm gonna do mine this weekend, um, and, uh, we'll write a report up on that, and then, uh, we're looking at, like, this project, we've got the bike rec thing, we're still, we're still looking at, um, but Jake has been astoundingly good with, and then, uh, and then we've got some other projects on the, on there as well, and our brochures, we're gonna get back up on the brochures, um, so I just printed some for Village Hall, and then, and she talked to Mark Jaeger, who knows, at the Town Rec Center as well, so.
One of the things, too, that maybe for a note for the Parks and Rec Committee, um, the, we re-roofed the one half of the kiosk, um, down two fifty.
Okay, so that's H B, that's actually historic preservation, okay.
Well, that too, yeah.
That's all right, well, this is.
Yeah, it's one of the, and, but, um, when I started the conversation with McAllister Signs about a diabon, they call it, to be, to do a trail map, and we've got a, there was some other signage and stuff that we're looking at, but, um.
We've got, we've got the, we've got, we've got a design for the signs on both sides, that were, to like, if you'd like, I could just email it to you, that'd be okay?
Yeah.
All right, and then, we obviously have to have a trail map on there, so it's what we promised, I don't know if you saw my little eight-five eleven trail map, I don't know, okay, yeah. Um, and we also need, you said you could also get bids on brochure recs from the state there or something, I think you mentioned?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure one of the vendors that's on, so, we could even, we could get three bids on the internets.
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 All right.
The interwebs.
Because we'd really like to see that, maybe, if we could do that for the spring, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, and, so, yeah, well, maybe you just, you and I need to touch base a little bit, I'll just send you some emails, but even, because H B C, every meeting, we talk about how's it gonna be designed, what's it gonna look like, and blah, blah, blah.
Hopefully, it's consistent with what I already sent her.
What did you send?
A big trail map.
Well, do you have, we, we wanna put, we wanna put, we do want the trail map on each side, but we wanna have, like, historical photos on each side, too.
Yeah, you know.
Okay, yeah, I, I think I've been in one whole side, it's a trail map and photos on the other side, because I figured, one end of it, if somebody walked, they were down, they're getting off the trail, they don't, the map's not much use to them anymore.
True.
So.
It's a good argument, we could certainly take that up as a possibility, I mean, that's not a bad idea, but maybe, maybe there's a poss, I don't, that's not, that's not bad.
Yeah, something that, there's probably six thousand different ways to do it.
Yeah, so, but we've got, we've got a lot of historic photos from down there, so we wanna make sure that there's a connection into what people, what they read, what the area looked like before it looked like that, and you're well aware of that, because you were the person that spearheaded giving that trail through there in the first place, so.
Now, being interrupted, speaking of the trail, too, I don't know if anybody noticed, we got a new dog do station, um, that we got from the county, um, they sent an email to County Stormwater Coalition, I believe it was, that had, uh, it was, it was, it's not mutton bits, but it's a similar, similar idea, so, we just installed down at the trail head, down on two fifty, uh, and there's another, there's one for the apartments, not too awful far away, that's over along the, along the parking lot, or along the access road, but figured people coming off the trail aren't gonna walk all the way over there and use it, and, um.
Right.
Oh, good.
So, there's a new, yeah, mutton bit thing that is down there, um, and this is a little sign reminding people that, that's, that's why we're getting algae blooms, I mean, it's not just all from dogs, but it's the nutrients, the people are fertilizers, things they're putting on their lawn, and, you know, the dog do that's just running off and even going down, so, um, just reminding people to pick the things up, and if you pick it up, throw it, throw it in the garbage can that's there, that's provided, it doesn't do a lot of good to pick it up and then hang it on a tree along the trail.
Oh, please, it sounds, oh, okay.
It's just kinda disgusting.
They really do that.
Yeah, it's.
It is, it's nasty.
Should we, so, with you guys, after we've gone through this, um, talking about the challenges in Highland, you come back and talk to you again, is that right?
Yeah, I think everyone's agreeing.
Okay, excellent.
Yeah.
So, Heather just, Heather just asked, oh, I'm sorry, do you have any other questions on that?
No.
Because, you know, I just have all these little different hats that I wear, so, as far as trick or tree trail goes, um, that's an, that's an, I'm planning, it's, it's right now being planned for the, whatever date it is, sixth of twenty-sixth, all right, okay. So, um, I am intending to have a dog mousing contest again, everyone out there, I really need your dogs, so.
Yes.
So, the, um, we will be, I've been writing the flyer a little different this year, so it's not nearly, because I saw people got a little confused with what I wrote in last year, and I'm really looking to get, I'd like to get between, you know, twenty and forty dogs for this, and get them in the costume, um, get, get them costumed, and get some, get a judging going on with the dogs as well.
I'll give you a judge.
I don't think Eddie would.
I'd love to have you be a judge, that'd be awesome, so.
I'll do that.
And, so that's where we're heading on that one, and I think, I've got people, some vendors, vendors outside the village have been signing, uh, wanted to sign up for trick or tree trails, we're gonna find some locations for a limited number of, of people who don't, you know, businesses or vendors who are not in the village, and I think that's it as far as, usually, you know, I really, what I have to do, I have to go to every single business, or, Pam, my wife does, and we, and we get them all signed up, that's the major part of it, once that's done, the rest of it kind of runs itself, because they get the candy, my responsibility is to make sure I have a list of all the businesses, I post that up on that day, and I walk around everywhere, making sure everybody's okay, so that's pretty much, that's my, my role, but, um, but we're looking, we definitely wanna get this dog thing going, Missy really wants us to do a scarecrow competition, I, I really want, I really, I really wanna do it, um, and I'm not the kind of person that says, just because it didn't work before, we're not gonna do it again, in fact, I'm exactly the opposite kind of person, but, we did do this before, and it didn't work, so, I'm, I'm leering over, um, but if we could get people interested in doing scarecrows, we'd love to have that to work, so.
It works in terrible.
Yes, they do, and we'd like to do it, I, one year, um, it was about, because I've been doing this for, since two thousand and six, so, wow, so, one of, one of the years I had, um, I had, I was really, I thought maybe if I did scarecrows, everyone else would do them, too, so my father put together the scarecrow, you know, they're basically like modified crosses, and he put them all together in the garage, and he had them all done, and I put up four scarecrows, scarecrows on myself, and there were exactly five scarecrows that year, so it didn't work out that well, but, um, but if he made, but, I mean, I'd love to see people, if people do just spontaneously put scarecrows up, we'll, we'll try to find a prize, so, I mean, if people are willing to do that, and I, I'd love to see us have the more interaction we can get with the community, we close out both sides of the street now, so there's a lot of room to roam around, it's, it's safe, um, so it's, you know, it's a God's stuff we could be doing, um, to keep it sort of simple, but still augment the, what's special about it, so.
I like it.
And don't forget about the historic tour this Saturday from one to three, October fifth, so, without one of my hats, so, right, but anyways, thank you very much for your consideration of this, we'll get with Jake and be back to talk to you about it, and, um, hopefully have some, something in the ground, or something on a tree next year, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Peter.
I just got a text, that legislature turf will be judging this.
Oh, me, I go over.
Well, if there's nothing else, motion to adjourn. Peter.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.